Then I'd like to call to the Board of the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, February 24th. All rise to the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number three is for selectmen's updates. I just want to remind people that the Board of Selectmen passed a recommended budget last week, and the budget public hearing is tomorrow night where the Board of Finance holds a meeting, and the town presents the recommended Board of Selectmen budget, and the Board of Education presents the recommended Board of Education budget. Then the process moves into the hands of Board of Finance, and there'll be another public hearing in April that people can attend and give feedback to the boards before the budget goes to vote on May 6th, which is the date of our referendum. Other updates. One small update on the Academy Grant. We did get word from USDA last week that the funds have now been moved from national to regional USDA. So they've been obligated at the local level, so that's a really good next move.
Yeah.
The, we do not have signed agreements back yet, so you know, that is still in process, but we're going to remain confident, I think, that things are moving along now. So we got a very positive email last week. The other grants are, we're still kind of in that pending mode. We haven't received any communications, but we also haven't been reaching out because we're not waiting for anything, right? So we're not looking to give you any notes right now on some of these projects. So, but we will be talking about in March, the status of those projects a little further, particularly the Pulsin project. You'll get a fuller update on where we are in the process and how that grant might impact that project. So we'll talk more about that. And that is my for selectmen's update. Any liaison reports or silent comments?
Negative.
We got one. Planning and zoning commission hosted a really great public forum this past week. The topic of discussion was housing. A lot of discussions surrounding housing choice in terms of style of housing, affordability, concerns about where housing could be located and the resources that we have in town for public infrastructure, and also, you know, with any additional housing that we might take on in the future, being cognizant of our coastal resiliency, of our waterways, of our tree canopy, those sorts of things. And so this is all part of the process that planning and zoning is currently going through to update their zoning regulations. And further discussions will be had. This was the first of many. And the next meeting is scheduled for April 3rd. I'm uncertain about if it's the same topic or if they're going to expand to other topics. Great, yeah, it was, I attended as well. It was just an observer, but it was great to see turnout from a lot of people and hear some feedback from the public. So conversation will continue. Any other updates?
Nope. Okay, so this isn't so much of a liaison update, but more of a comment. I recently became aware of the difficulties the town has in accommodating residents as they ask for different safety measures, traffic calming measures in neighborhoods. And as I went down the rabbit hole a little bit, I found a procedure that was drafted in 2010 between the Board of Selectmen and the Police Commission. And we, in reading it, it sounds like it was trying to address some of the same problems that we're having now process-wise. And I think that, I think there's some conversations underway to bring that back up to the surface, to update it, and to create a working process. And just want to say that I would hope that the Police Commission, as the legal traffic authority, the LTA, would embrace that consensus spirit that the, that the process had in place, which was the Board of Selectmen, Public Works, the Police Commission, the Police Chief, all coming together to, if not set certainty for residents as they ask for different traffic calming measures, at least the knowledge that there was a process, that that process would be consistently applied. And so I think this is an opportunity for us to, to work and need at least expectations of process with the community.
Yeah, maybe just a reminder of the process too, it sounds like, which is helpful.
Well, I have talked to both the Police Department and Public Works, and they are actually working on a formal process, like in terms of like forms and first it goes here, you know?
Yeah.
Because I think it was more kind of a loose process and there was kind of, and.
And we don't always hear about all the signage issues for sure. I don't think they.
No, and they typically go through the Police Commission anyways, but then Public Works addresses and people call Public Works with sign issues as well. So there's going to be kind of a more flow to it, and then like forms and approvals. And I know they've been working on that. Sam has been out the last couple of weeks, but the plan was to put them on either nature, March or April, to talk about what they're recommending. And then I know Jack was bringing it with the Police Commission too. Weren't they going to talk about the LTA process? Al, do you remember? I don't know if I got on the last meeting. Okay, so it will be a topic for the Police Commission.
Right, and so what I'm simply saying is, I hope we have a chance to be part of that.
Yeah.
And on an ongoing basis as well as on a, on the creative level is getting the document up and running. And then on the item of the public comment, I did go to the Police Commission meeting recently as a member of the public and made comments, and the commissioners immediately engaged in a conversation with me. And I actually had to say, okay, time out. I appreciate, I appreciate back and forth. And it was a very small audience, I assure you. But I think coming up with guidance that we can hand out to our boards and commissions will work because our natural inclination as neighbors and friends and acquaintances is to start talking back and forth. And we need to have a common understanding of what's really supposed to be happening.
Yeah, good.
And I think that speaks to one of the agenda items.
That's why I bring it up. That's why I bring it up.
Great, okay, any other? If no comments, okay, great, all right. And we will open it up for citizens' comments. Anybody would like to make a comment now, please raise your hand. I don't see any online. Oh, wait.
Two hands raised.
Yep. Jeanie?
Go ahead, Teri. Okay, hi. Teri Van Endelder, Bartlett Drive. Good evening. I wanted to mention that a few folks were talking about how, and I just noticed this myself, to be honest with you, that the notes of the Board of Selectmen meetings don't include a brief summary of citizens' comments, but only note the number of people who commented, and whether that be in person or at the meeting physically or online via Zoom. It's, I understand, but I can't verify this and don't know that for myself, that under the previous selectmen's administration, citizens' comments were included in summary. So one question is, why are the minutes of the Board of Selectmen meetings now void of such a summary? And then secondly is, there's a concern among several citizens that item 15 on tonight's agenda, depending on the outcome of that discussion, might further limit the public's contributions and concerns as aired, not only to the board, but also to the Madison citizens at large. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thanks, Teri.
Thank you. Next hand raised? Alex, that will be you.
Good evening. This is Alex Provence, 917 Boston Post Road. Am I coming in clearly?
Yep.
Great. This is a follow-up to Agenda Item 15, discuss and take action to approve policy regarding public participation during town board and commission meetings. It's a little early to be making comments given, I'm not sure what direction the Commission intends to go this evening. Certainly appreciated Bruce's comment a moment ago as far as the legalities of commission protocols, but just wanted to run through a few concerns of mine. First, public participation is the bedrock of our town government. I think everyone on the board would agree with that. Our government has survived many administrations, and while we're, we have conversations now that aren't always easy. Academy, planning and zoning is never without its drama. The foundation of our form of government is public engagement. Part of the description of a chair, I would argue, and this is in regards to probably feedback that you as a board have received from other committees, and which is to say, it's not always easy dealing with members of the public, but I would argue the seat of chair, the job of chair is to have the skillset required to handle public engagement effectively and equitably. Madam Chair, you're quite good at that, as you, as we all know. As far as time goes, I know Bruce, you've been keeping track of time. And while two minutes may seem sufficient, not everyone is proficient public speaker. People get nervous. Not everyone speaks English as a first language. Certainly, we're not all professional orders. And so it helps to have some sort of leeway and compassion and flexibility to allow people to express themselves, and not all of us are going to express ourselves as polishedly as others. But their, their opinion still is valuable to the community and to the topic at large. Land use attorneys, as we know during a planning and zoning, get plenty of time to go over their application. It's their job after all. But wouldn't it be fair, isn't it fair that homeowners get more than two minutes or get the required amount of time to, to express themselves, especially when it's dealing with something as personal as their own home? I think by having a timeline that's enforced too rigorously, we open up ourselves as a town to liability where someone could say, they didn't like what I was saying, they cut me off at two minutes. Meanwhile, someone who, who's liked by the board or whatever seemed to go on and wasn't interrupted. Public comment, I'll remind everyone, is an agenda item. It's on, it's on the agenda, it's listed, and it's a legit and critical way for citizens to engage with, with boards and commissions. The erosion of civic engagement and participation sets a dangerous precedent that might seem okay now, given everyone sort of agrees, but there could be a time down the road where an erosion of our, of our right to speak and engage might, might be seen differently. I'll end with that. I'm not sure where the conversation goes tonight, but I truly hope I respect all of you very much and know you'll do what's best, but please keep in mind some of these considerations. Thank you.
Thanks, Alex.
Thank you. Any other hands raised?
I bet Teri's still promoting.
Okay, good. Oh, yeah. Jeanie, Teri's still on as a panelist. So I guess we'll move on to item number six. And I'm going to make a motion to present an amended consent agenda that I sent out earlier to the board, and I would be adding the following items to the consent agenda. And item number six E, appoint Al Goldberg as the Board of Selectmen liaison to the Madison 200 American 250 Steering Committee. And adding item number six F, add one member of the Board of Finance to the charge of the Madison 200 American 250 Steering Committee. Section 3, membership terms and vacancies, non-voting. So move.
Second.
Okay, any further conversation? Let's just cleaning up something that we should have known a while back. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for that. Consent agenda passes unanimously. Item number seven, discuss and take action to approve a proclamation naming March 2025 Problem Gambling Awareness Month.
So move.
Okay, this is a new proclamation that we have not done. That's why it's not the consent agenda, and this is an initiative that the state is undertaking as well as advocacy groups. And this will be posted, it's quite long, but it's obviously highlighting an issue that we as a community, we see across the state, people struggling with gambling addiction. And this is trying to create more awareness for that. So we will have the full proclamation available on the town website, and just want to make people aware that there are resources available also for them for treatment. With that, any further conversation? All, yep.
I, this is going to be, I don't know if it's going to be a popular or unpopular comment, but I didn't realize that the state was doing it. I find it extraordinarily hypocritical that the state professes a concern for gambling addiction when it is in the business of gambling. I've never understood that ever. And I, I don't know how to reconcile that. I think us as a community, supporting people is perfectly appropriate, but I think the state needs to take a hard look at itself in the mirror and maybe get out of the business of gambling.
Point taken. I mean, I think it's, you know, they're obviously focused on people who have issues with gambling, just awareness to seek help, and so they're kind of advocating that we bring this awareness, you know, so people can come out and reconcile with their issues. But understood, that's a philosophical thing. I mean, whether it's casinos or lotteries, you know, all that stuff. A lot of, a lot of states now have gambling. My sister lives in New Hampshire, and they just opened a casino in Nashville, so.
In New Hampshire, they sell all the liquor too, so.
That's true.
They've got a, they've got a lock on the vices.
Yeah, they do. But, but obviously, we still want to advocate for people get help. So with that, I guess all in favor of the proclamation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, great, thank you. That passes. And moving on to item number eight. Update from the Facilities Department on the Neck River Elementary School project and its related budget. And we have Peter Anderson here, as well as the Chair of the Building Committee for the Neck River Elementary School, and Colliers Adams, representing Colliers here, who's the project manager for the project. Getting close now, right? Very excited to see.
It is, yes. I'll provide this project review. So I'll just provide a 30-second snapshot of this overall project status and then bullet point down the agenda for just broad discussions about budget. Towards the end of the project, so good news generally all around, trending on time, under budget. We've received all the big equipment. Call back, we did some early procurement of big mechanical pieces. Those are on hand, have the transformer from EverSource, so all is progressing nicely. Really, right now, the focus is on building out the interior. You'll still see some components on the exterior, windows, various pieces of the envelope, but Gobain and their subcontractors are ordering through the inside, paint, ceiling grids. It's moving along quite well. And as they move forward, they're pressing deeper and deeper into the nuts and bolts of the building. Mechanical systems, as we build out the IT closets, which you've been approving equipment for here. I'll get build up, get, start turning on the various components and backflow systems of the school. So all is progressing as should be. In terms of just broad timeline, as a reminder, refresh, the school is slated to be substantially complete the end of May. That's effectively where the building becomes occupiable. That would be the intended goal there. You would start school the day after you occupy the building, but that would be the transition between construction focus to end-user focus. So after that point, you could start doing your move-ins, your furniture build-out, that's some from Gobain, and the staff can start coming in and getting familiarized with the systems. And that would transition increasingly so as we move towards late August, early September, and start school. So that's the high-level timeframe we're looking at in terms of just schedule of progress. Anyone interested, the school building committee does have a website that has pretty cool drone video on it to do updates. So anyone that can't see over the big construction fence, keep them online and get a good bird's eye view of what's going on. In terms of budget, again, similar good news. After removing the Pulsin funds that were transferred, the 3.4 approximate million, the project is still trending towards big under-budget, the overall funds allocated to it. A lot of that is going to be contingent upon what's left in terms of contingency funds. So owners' contingency, obviously, there's that pool of money for unexpected items and developments. But also, there's the construction manager's contingency, any which is unspent, comes back to the town. Allowances, again, if not spent, it comes back to the town, as well as just budget line items that we didn't exceed the budget to. So for example, we're not spending over advertising budget, in which case that would be under the funds of the project. The timeline for understanding how much under-budget we're going to be really starts to gain clarification after that aforementioned substantial completion date, because that's really when the, again, scope is done, and we're not putting any new components of the building. And also, for example, we're past winter, so those, so those winter contingencies will be able to be reconciled and released at that point. So again, as we transfer towards the end of the project, we'll get increased clarity as to how much will be left. Right now, projections suggest that it might be upwards of, you know, a million dollars, something, or more than that. But point being is that we're not protecting a small insignificant amount of excess budget at this point. We're spending raises the question, what happens to that money? What do you do with that? How do you go about spending it to determine what happens with that money? So I'll pause there for a moment.
So just to clarify that, the, it was three and a half, I think, that was.
3.45.
3.45 was transferred over. Right. That was transferred over is now basically available to be transferred back, right? To the Pulsin project. So I thought we could put that on the agenda in March meeting, just to formally kind of transition it over, then make people feel good, okay, it's back. Then you can look at your, you know, it's not some money hanging out there. So that's good news.
At the same time, could we also have a discussion about Ryerson?
Yeah.
Yes.
And funds for demolition of Ryerson. Because I think it's important that we earmark.
Have a plan.
Rights for that, yeah.
So I think the 3.5, 4.5 needs to go back, though, I think, first, right? And arguably, right, because Pulsin still has to go through its process. Then there's going to be full money left over, which is roughly a million to 1.5 or something like that, that would then be available for Ryerson demolition. So I'm saying, I think we should move the Pulsin money first, though. That would be looking at them.
I agree, that was money we, that was money we identified that Pulsin didn't need.
Right, 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 right.
And just before we start allocating all of the money out, let's, I think the Ryerson project needs to be pretty high up on the list.
Yeah, and one of the things.
Does Pulsin need it? Like, if we transferred it back, does Pulsin need it?
Yes, yes, Pulsin will need it. I think it's better, because the problem with Pulsin, and we'll talk about this next month, is you're still a year, two years out, it's phased in. So you still have some, you know, we should be fine with the budget, but you don't really know where things are going to land with, you know, going out to bid a year from now on certain components and things like that. Plus, remember, we also have that federal grant for the generator, right? So that's part of the whole conversation.
For the first, 270.
Yeah, for, no, for the generator, Pulsin, for versus the shelter. Yeah, the shelter, yeah. So agreed that we, next month, we talk about Ryerson. And one of the things that we probably need to do to get a better handle on Ryerson is do this study, because I know we spoke about this, right? So, because there's a number that was kind of estimated, I think it was like a million five or a million eight in the original budget.
It's a pretty round number, yeah.
For the, for the demolition. But now they need to go in and actually like see what is in there. And so there's a report, money that they could.
Yeah, that has my investigation led to specifics. We used to do it until after the building's vacated, because you don't want to be tearing up the building. But after the summertime, go in, we have, we have a consultant ready to, you know, retain to do that work. And then we'll have a better handle on the 1. something million dollar budget.
Right. Yeah, so then we'll see, we'll know, you know, how much money we have left for Ryerson, but then we'll get a firmer idea of what's needed for, and it might be, we might even need more than that. That's the problem, right? It could be, you know, because there was just kind of a number kind of put into the budget, so we don't know the level of that. So I think, you know, I'm assuming the board would want them to proceed, right? Hiring, do this hazardous materials assessment this summer, so that that process can start. And then we'll come back with a bigger, a better rest.
For sure, yep.
And in terms of the process, that money's for that hazardous material assessment never left the sort of squirreled away contingency bucket, because there was the question early on of the project, Ryerson in or out. So those money's were allocated for that assessment. We did receive some pricing earlier on for the assessment we're talking about, so I can reach out to the consultant and updating quotes in the meantime between now and the next. I mean, just, again, to keep things moving. And then, again, from a high-level perspective, it shouldn't be summer, like you mentioned. That's when the actual testing would be occurring, was students back, staff around the building. So between now and that, it would just be a internal town discussion. So then, again, around the summer, fall, we'd have sort of simultaneous clarity on extensive scope. Perhaps there's an updated, like a more formal estimate done based on the results of the study per construction, as well as clarity as to how much may or may not be left at the end of the job. So all that kind of coalesces around the fall timeframe.
So I think then, in March at least, we can do transfer, talk a little bit more about Ryerson and identify the numbers, and, you know, still get a better assessment this summer of what we actually needed to do with demolition. And then the project would close out, what was the, you were saying?
In terms of Neck River closeout from the standpoint of the state and reimbursement,
Yeah.
we'd look to submit final grant reimbursement applications towards the end of this year. So it'd be a good demarcation point between Neck River and a potential Ryerson effort. The Ryerson effort would be 100% not eligible for reimbursement anyway, because it's outside the project line. So those aren't really tied to each other. You can draw a clean line between elementary school, state reimbursement, then whatever other monies are spent for Ryerson or not, that's a separate one. So it's a pretty clean handoff in some parts.
Okay, and then I know there was one other thing that was being, I know that the building committee had wanted to do was the solar, which there's not going to be one left over for that and the demolition project, right? So.
Correct, yeah.
So I think that's kind of on hold anyways, because you're waiting for the roof, I guess, to get through the first year of the warranty of the roof, I think.
Yeah, so we envisioned that to be a separate project, after in fact, either through, you know, through a potential PPA, but preferably purchased directly, because we can take advantage of the savings ourselves. Also out there is the potential IRA funding, grant funding that could, could return the town $3 million. Would not come back to this project directly, or the general fund.
Fund, and then, and then we could opt to use that.
That for the solar.
We decided to take that money, if we end up getting it, the federal money, if the IRA funding comes through, and apply that to the solar. So I think the solar's going to be a good conversation to have.
But we had to wait anyways, right? Because of the roof.
Yeah, we wouldn't, yeah, exactly. We wouldn't want to get two contractors and say, better than finish the roof, warranty it started, and then. And we're designing the roof to be solar-ready, to as much extent practical as we can.
Okay, so I think, I mean, that's all good news, right? And then, and, you know, hopefully, we'll be able to achieve everything that we had wanted with the project budget. You know, we'll come back and.
Can I ask a question? Is it all right? When you're done.
Yeah, two minutes.
When you're done talking. When you're two minutes. When you're done.
I'm happy to stop talking tonight. Trust me.
You're tired. New puppy. So.
I can tell by.
Do you guys foresee any risks or issues? I mean, kind of as you come to the end of any project, there's always sort of a potential landlines, right? So not that I want to bait as such, but are there any risks that you guys are keeping up to date?
I will forego the typical consultant answer of, well.
Well, I'm a consultant too, so I get it.
So what we can ask, we had some discussion on the school building committee relatively recent. And myself, I'm the construction manager, most of the big risks that jeopardize a project, whether it be, usually your big unknown for these, is something that occurs at the site, at the earth, that might impact your foundations or whatever. Those are past, as well as a lot of the procurement risks. So, you know, in terms of contingency use, most of that is getting down to smaller and smaller levels of bits of rig work or changes. But we're talking about, you know, I can think of the things that we're talking about in the trailer now, they're largely fit, finish type items where you can use it that way, but you prefer to do it another way. So not something that, as of right now.
You're not high risk, are you? They're not high risk issues.
Right, I don't, I don't have anything, as we said here, that would jeopardizing open a school, for example. So, that's the, that's the level of what we're talking about in terms of risk is, money's a big expenditure, you know. How, what's a big risk is, of the subject interpretation, but in terms of categorizing it as, do we open a building on time, and is it a building that people like? Those risks are rapidly going up.
Great, thank you.
I'd like to follow up Scott's question. If you recall, the Madison Land Trust made some very nice gestures to help this project, and one of the things the town promised them was.
Pollinator garden.
Well, for the consultation on the final landscaping.
Yeah.
And I just want to make sure that that's in the works and that whatever money or final landscape, and he's still in the budget.
Yes, so the pollinator garden, the land along the river, that's, I remind Adam all the time, make sure, promise to let it cross. We got, we got, he's got a contingency item for it, we'll, you know, we'll have, we're all sorry about having the high school students get involved in the selection of the plantings and let them participate within the limits of what makes sense.
Thank you, that's great.
I have a pollinator garden, for sure. Okay, well, I think with that, then we'll just be on the agenda probably by the end of March, I expect, see how scheduling lies, but to transfer the Poulsen money back, and then we'll have an update on funding, and talk more about Ryerson. Dig out maybe what the estimates were before that kind of stuff, but then I do think I would get that person teed up for the. Why don't you forget what it's called right now, the hazardous materials.
Hazmat.
Yeah, the hazmat, right, so that would be great. And I know we have some items that we're approving, right, that the, for the school, so any other questions for the team here, no?
No, sounds great.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Great.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Item number nine, discuss and take action to reward the following contracts of the Net River Elementary School project as recommended by the ad hoc new school building committee. And to authorize first select and assigned documents and contracts associated with these awards budget in the Net River Elementary School project. A to United Agitur for maintenance tractor in the amount of seventeen thousand fifty-three thousand forty-one cents, vendors on the contract. B to Imperial Dave for backpack vacuum in the amount of two thousand two hundred ninety-seven thousand eighty cents. And to BoBLC, to BoBLC Designs for Green Brands in the amount of nine hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. Any, can I get a second on that?
Sure.
Okay, any further comments, questions? I'm assuming this is, this is going to be absolutely sunny playground. That's site work as well, all right, it's not, yeah, two play, yeah, because they have the three K one and then the other, right? I remember, and that's including site work and all that as well, it's not just.
Yeah, yeah.
I think grounds was around that, right?
It was like four or three something, but it was just there, yeah.
It was up there.
Yeah, just, it was just a certain grade level.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Is the, is the equipment being paid for out of the bonded money, or are we, is this a CIP item?
That's what I was wondering about the turf maintenance tractor and, like, the backpack vacuum, this is.
Senator, perfect.
Is it reimbursable?
Playground's for sure are, I believe, we, it was a discussion about the backpacks, I'd have to check my notes. And then, maintenance tractor, I gotta have to double check, I typically state use that, often use it as not, because it's something that could be moved to a different hotel. But, I gotta double check my notes on.
So, so what is a maintenance tractor?
It's a, it's garden tractor, it's what you use to mow the lawns and plow the sidewalks.
So it's a lawnmower?
Yes.
Or it's a multi-use?
Yes.
But you're leaving it there.
Wow, yeah, pile everything.
Where's it going to be stored on?
This is a shed in the back.
Other than, or your offices?
Exactly, yeah.
And then what's happening to the one, how does it currently work? So, like, up at the campus for Brown and Ryerson, is there one that's shared for that campus?
Is that tractors?
Yeah.
Oh, each school has one.
Okay, so what are hap, what's happening then to the ones that are.
Well, actually, the one in Ryerson just broke.
Okay.
So, they are sharing it now.
Okay, and then what about the one that said Jeffrey?
There isn't one in Jeffrey.
There isn't one in Jeffrey, okay, okay, great.
Just because of the property. It's mostly handled by the feature, yeah. We have, we have more snow blowers, and then there's small.
Any further questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, great. Item number ten, discuss and take action to reward a change order to CDW for community awards amounts in the amount of twenty-nine thousand seven hundred, as recommended by the ad hoc new school building committee. For the Net River Elementary School project to authorize first select and assigned documents and contracts associated with the award budget in the Net River Elementary School project.
Go blue.
Is that good? Okay, any further questions on that? Is this, didn't you do a movement going through?
Yeah.
And this is the mounts.
It's the what?
The natural mounts.
Oh, the mounts, okay.
Oh, they don't, it's not a package deal?
Yeah, oh, man. All right, any further questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, great. Okay, I think that is, that is it, thank you, guys.
Thanks, everybody.
And we talked about doing some sort of tour, so, you know, as the building goes through, so maybe we'll schedule something for the year, because we haven't been in literally.
I can, I can arrange it with Nick, and I'll, I'll be anything wants.
Yeah, we, I know we've talked about it, because I haven't been in it at all, so.
It's, it's worth, it's worth a while.
Yeah, I think it's very good to see.
And those guys are happy to have anybody anytime.
Yeah, okay.
Do we arrange for you, or?
I'll, 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 I'll reach out to, I'll reach out to the guys tomorrow and, and set up a common thread with you and Drew, and you guys can schedule that.
Yeah, we can schedule that, cool. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay.
They got enough.
Yes.
Item number eleven, discuss and take action to approve the terms of release extension regarding the north side parking lot and authorize first select and assigned documents and contracts associated with. Okay, this is following, we had a conversation about this, it involves the parking lot that is downtown, that is actually owned by two property owners there. This is one behind the post office, the town leases it for public use, and we pay a hefty sum every year to do that, we also maintain it. And, but we feel it's public benefit for having public parking there. And I think we talked about that there was a, you know, the lease dated twenty years or twenty-five years with a five-year renewal, and it finally sunsetted. And we're looking to just extend it another three years at the, at the new lease amount, with the understanding that we're going to kind of reevaluate, you know, the town's role in, in parking generally. So this is just an amendment that we would have signed that would extend the lease except for the amount of the lease for another three years. So, any further questions, that was in your packet, the extension, this was done by our town council, I have not presented it to them, I'm just, this is, it's keeping it super simple, and the, and the dollar amount was agreed upon. Any other questions? No, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, great, thank you. Item number twelve, discussion of the board of select and recommended town budget and potential guidance for mill rate. So, we voted our budget, but then we normally also have a conversation about, do we want to get, give a recommendation to the board of finance? The last four or five years, we've already presented, we think that they should try to get a certain mill rate, you know, it's their purview, we all recognize that they're the ones that set the mill rate. They make the assumptions for the revenue and any appropriations, but sometimes we like to just give them a suggestion, you know, a recommendation, and then they can take that. And, and so, we didn't really talk about that, and I didn't want to present something that we hadn't talked about, so I sent you a draft of my, of the, you know, presentation. We're, in order to basically get to our, we've always been kind of targeting a two percent or less mill rate increase, that's part of the medicine investment plan, keeps us on track. With all our different obligations for debt service and capital. And, you know, it would require us to either, well, make some changes to our revenue assumptions, which are worthy changes, as well as probably an appropriation from fund balance. And I think that in order to get to that two-ish percent number, it was an eight and fifty thousand dollar appropriation, right?
Yeah, over and above adjustments.
Yeah, and then, and last year, we had recommended a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar one, they did a five hundred thousand. So, they will kind of take it under advisement, I think, so the question is, do we want to stick with this again? Or would you prefer not to do this this year, or do something different? I guess it's a question.
I'd like, when we've done it, I think it's a good practice, but.
I don't know, I sit on the other side of the glass on that one, I, I think it's a very dangerous practice.
For us to give a recommendation?
No, 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 the recommendation could be whatever it is, and we, obviously, we've seen they, they're, they're, they're very confident in their dismissal of our recommendation. As they should be, as they should be.
You know, it's a, you know.
The, the problem is that it creates a cliff every time we do it. And if there were ever a year where that money wasn't available, did we?
Did you jump up the extra money in the.
The appropriation.
Right.
Appropriation we do.
Right, so we're, we're, we're basically, we're buying down the budget with surplus funds, unallocated funds, excess funds, whatever you want to call it. In a year where we run out of that money, the, whatever we did the year before is, is an instant tax increase on top of the organic growth of the budget. And so, you know, it's.
Is there a better practice, though, of how to do it, like, that's why I struggle?
The better practice, in my opinion, would be not to buy down the mill rate.
And just let it be what it.
Just, just let it be what it is. The, where, where, year over year, we increase spending, and then we try to offset that with tax dollars that we've already overcollected on. Now, we've overcollected because we've got an extra interest, or we've got an extra grants, or we've made very, very conservative forecasts on our, on our incomes. All, I mean, we, I mean, we've overcollected for a lot of very, very good reasons.
Yeah, yeah.
But, we're taking tax dollars that we collected last year to buy down spending increases that we're doing this year. And I, so it's, it's a philosophical debate.
I know, but the trick is, it's the impact on the public, right? So the public sort of, you know, pays the price if we don't do it.
The public votes for the budget, the public, the public votes for the bonding, the public votes for all of these things. So, do they need to be sheltered from the consequences of their decisions? I don't know.
The trick, though, is if we, you know, it's, if we have the money, why not use it?
Why not use to pave roads?
Or, yeah, or.
Or, 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 or buy off the school debt, or, or, or build a new surf club, or, you know, put it to something that, that, you know, that has sort of an immediate benefit.
A capital.
These, these are all philosophical.
And I think that's, yeah, I mean, that's why we have our board of finance too, partnering with our town finance department, is they are looking at all of these things in concert together. So, yes, we can make those recommendations, but then why have a board of finance?
And you know a guy, too.
I might know a guy.
Yeah.
But, aside from knowing a guy, I think, you know, that's why we have this board, that's why the voters voted for the people that are on this board, is. Because they trust them to be evaluating the financial picture as well.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think this, this has anything to do with trust, it was just a matter of just.
Right.
Looking ahead and sort of being strategic and.
Right.
And I think, though, I think the board of select, you know, does set the overall strategic, and, and mass and investment plan involves not just, you know. The targeted mill rate involves, you know, the grants and the appropriations in different areas, the CIP infusions, it's all been a team effort. I mean, I, I'm perfectly comfortable, we can, we've done it for the last four years, I'm happy to, like, take out a recommendation, but I would like to state that we would like to see it less than two, you know, two percent or less, because that's what we've been working towards.
And I think conveying that, listen, as part of the puzzle, to make this whole thing work, there's, you know, we've got baked in this eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You guys can take it under consideration, I, I don't really have a problem with that, but since I have the platform to say, I really think this is a bad idea anyways, I'm going to use it.
I guess I, you know, now this is what, sixth budget, you know, there's all these different tools, right? And every year, we try to make things least impactful, for some people, the taxes, right? And I know for some people, it's, you know, any tax increase is going to be a problem, where they're not going to be happy with that. But we try to make it least impactful, but we're still getting our list of things done that we want to get done for the town. And so this is one of those tools, right? And it's, we talk about, I mean, I was on the board of finance, you know, ten years ago, whatever, and we were doing it then. I mean, it's, it's been a common, and some years it's like five hundred thousand, some years two fifty, we did, I think, seven fifty the year, two years ago, you know. So we've kind of played it and balanced it, and that's the board of finance's job, they're going to be the ones that'll look at the assumptions, figure out what makes sense. The reality is that it's kind of your hedge against your, your revenue assumptions, because it's, it's a guess, right? How the revenue's going to come out every year, and we have a grant list that this year didn't really grow a lot, because we had such a big impact with revaluation, right? So we kind of like maxed out on our growth for the grant list. So that's where that really is going to have a big impact for that, and that's going to be the conversation they will have.
Right, but similar to our conversation that we're having later about public conversations, that it being a guideline, this is just a recommendation too. So at the end of the day, the board of finance can still do what the board of finance wants anyways, right?
And they, and they will do that.
Yeah, and they will, and they always do.
So, I guess, the question is, does it matter whether, you know, I think the most important thing is we suggest staying on the strategic.
Yeah, and maybe I don't get into the actual mill rate this year, just take that out, but just talk about, we want to continue that they target something that fits within the mass investment plan, right? And there are other leaders, they have to do that, they have revenue, they have, and they may make additional changes to the budget for all, you know, I don't know how they're going to approach the school budget. So, that's part of what their job is, is to do that. So you're, you're, you don't, you would prefer no specific recommendation, just no little kind of.
Actually, I'm, I'm indifferent about it, I, I'm happy to, to vote in favor of sort of a package deal that includes that eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, to sort of make the whole thing work. I'm just taking advantage of the platform to say, you know, and what I would say to the board of finances is, you should be focused on our offering. You know, we're going to a, this budget to work needs a bigger mill rate buydown than last year. I'm hoping, well, I take that back, they did five hundred thousand last year, we recommended seven fifty. I would love for them to be thinking of taking the, the number and then reducing it, you know, every year, so that at some point it gets to zero, so that we don't have to worry about a cliff. In a subsequent budget year, but again, that's a board of finance conversation, I would pay attention to that as a taxpayer, but as a board, as a selectman.
Right.
You know, we've, we've given what we feel is a responsible budget, and hopefully they can figure out how to make it work.
Hey, I'm curious, what, what were you thinking, what was your kind of, what were you, what were you recommending as a student?
Well, basically, I just talked to Stacy, I said, what gets us to that two percent or less number, so she came up with an eighty.
So it's Stacy's fault?
It's all Stacy's fault, and that's normally how we got, we've done that every year. But, you know, I know last year, for some, some members of the board of finance felt that was overreach, even though we have done it every year. And I feel like, you know, the, the goal was to put it in context, I think, always, you know, what our budget meant for people, right? But that step will hopefully be happening with the board of finance, because the board of finance didn't use to present even a mill rate, an implied mill rate for a long time. There was, you know, so people were literally in the dark about what this meant for the taxes, right? So, now the board of finance does give an implied mill rate, they come up with a package of assumptions, and kind of say, this is if it gets moved on, this is what it will be. So, so I'm comfortable dialing, we don't have to get into the specifics if we don't want to, and we'll just say, we want you to target, because of our, we've all agreed to follow this investment plan, and we kind of got to keep that number down, that was our promise to the public, right?
Well, I think you can be as specific as what the recommendation is in the investment plan, which is two percent or less, which you, you always say anyways.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, and then they figure out which tools are going to help them get there.
Are you okay with that, in terms of leaving it less specific?
I don't think we want to go into the whole, the, the, the structure philosophy of the mass investment plan today, I think that's a little, that's a little off topic.
No, 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 but we're recommend, she's got to make a recommendation.
Oh, like I said, I, I, listen, I'm fine with, with you conveying on behalf of the board, hey, here's a plan that keeps the mill rate at around two percent. It's, it's an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar buydown on the, on the budget from the other side of the fund balance. This is what we came up with, here you go, which is really all you're doing, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's all we're doing.
And it's just a recommendation, so.
Yeah, and it's just, and it's just to put context around what the budget means, that you can get there with it, but that they're going to take their own.
And maybe even just that caveat, we recognize the fact that you're going to do your own thing.
Right, okay.
I, too, am a former board of finance member.
I too am a former Board of Finance member, and I think Bruce makes a very valid philosophical point. But in the final analysis, I think you've all observed, it's just a recommendation. It shows our thinking, or maybe most of us, and they're going to do what they want. And this is, to me, more, nothing more than a reminder, here's how we think those funds should be applied. And so I'm.
To me, this is the, yeah, this is the two way street too. And Bruce, you and I have talked about for ten years now about asking for guidelines back from the Board of Finance to us on budgetary spend and things like that. I think this is just, again, recommending, so we're all on the same page, that's all. And I think communicating this more is good.
Okay. Okay, so.
So so I think you're hearing consensus to go ahead and include.
Yeah, all right, all right, okay. All right, so we will move on to item number thirteen. Discuss and take action to amend section five dash two of the Town Ordinance System for the defined leash. And this is just a follow up on the recommendation that came from our animal control officer that there's been issues with people using electronic leashes.
Yes, I remember that.
So this more fully defines it, and this is a proposal. Actually, Jeanie helped research some other communities that have language and suggested this and have a defined principle. So we have a very modest amendment to the ordinance. And then if we were to approve this, well, actually, we would have to call a public hearing. Or it really wouldn't be action to amend, it would be to recommend. Kind of think through the action, actually, because we send it to public hearing and then we pass it. Or do we have to do the public hearing?
Recommend, okay.
Yeah, okay, I'm just trying to think semantics. Usually we send it to public hearing, then we vote to approve. Yeah.
Do you want to take one?
So.
Would we call this a technical change, or would we call this a?
Yeah, you know, this is a technical change, it's just defining, maybe we don't need to do a public hearing. I think we could just vote on it. I think you're right, this is just a.
I mean, we're we're clarifying.
Clarifying something, yeah, I agree with you.
Leash.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're not substantially changing the flavor of the the words. I think this is clarifying, so.
We're just clarifying so she can enforce that a electronic leash does not qualify as a leash.
The substance of the ordinance is not changing.
So. So we would then, we could approve item thirteen and then and I can run it by carey, we can approve it, and then we could always call a public hearing.
I vote for that.
Okay, all right, so why don't we do that then? So any comments or questions on the proposed language?
Doesn't apply to my dog, right?
Okay. Nobody on the network. No, just one question, though. A lot of people have electric fences for their dogs. Does this in any way impact that? I know the electric fence is different than the e collars for the leashes, but I'm just thinking in terms of, but this is, this is more public, public property. Okay, public property, so on private property. But what I guess I'm thinking of is, say, somebody's battery goes dead, and then the dog gets off the property, and it's like, well, I thought I had my dog contained.
But but what happens if the dog burrows under a fence?
True.
You have, I have a fence and the dog be under it, so, so it's a different scenario.
Okay.
It's it's it's, yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure other people didn't have, like.
I think we need to define fence now, too. Just kidding.
Okay, no, I I hear your point taken, but I think, yeah, like, any dog that gets out of the property, right? Yes, the owner is going to be responsible, they're going to be violating the law. True, true, okay. Whether it's electronic or not, but. Okay, so then, I guess, all in favor of approving the amendment presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, great. I will then table item fourteen for further clarification if you need to come call a public hearing. Item fifteen, discuss and take action to support policy regarding public participation during town board and commission meetings.
Peggy, item fourteen had nothing to do with the amendment of the leash law.
Hearing for, you're right, sorry, I got to go back. I'm not taking item fourteen, you're right. Just because we talked about the public hearing needed for the ordinance. Okay, item number fourteen, excuse me. Discuss and take action in public hearing in town campus, room C, Hammanas, room and on Zoom on Thursday, April eighth, twenty twenty five, Sunday, for the purpose of discussing the town and Board of Education budgets as recommended.
Tell them.
Okay, this is just the formal calling a public hearing, I I was, um, for the town budget. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number fifteen, discuss and take action to approve policy regarding public participation during town board and commission meetings.
Tell them.
Second.
Okay, so this is, once again, this is our third time to spin on the agenda. The purpose of this is not to limit public comment, it is not to.
Wait, say that again, so that people.
Yeah. For the third time, this is not to limit, all it is doing is codifying best practices for public comment and recommendations that we can give to all our town, our boards and committee members for a formal policy. Some of our boards and commissions don't have public comment on their agendas. Some chairs and board members don't know how to handle public comment, and they end up getting in a big kind of debate or dialogue. So this is trying to give to all boards and commissions recommendations about how to conduct public comment, to have it at your meetings. And then for our board to have like what we think are guidelines for public comment. We typically follow the same thing. We allow people, and this is, you know, and and it's it's kind of loose. If we have a hundred people in the room, yeah, we got to kind of limit it to two minutes a person. If we have, you know, three people, half the time we end up in a chit chat with them about whatever it is. So I think we weigh the room as a board, and I try to view that as a board at discretion. But sometimes we might look out and say, okay, we got a lot of people here, we got a lot of business to get done, so we need to have some more formal, we have to have these guidelines that we can point to to keep the move, uh, meeting moving along, right?
I also think there are some boards and commissions too that don't always do public comment. So this is going to suggest that we add more public comment, which is a very, very good thing.
Right, but but you bring up an important point, which is none of the boards and commissions, including the Board of Selectmen, has an obligation.
Correct.
To public comment. We do this because we think it's the right thing to do. We've always done it because because the boards that came before us all thought it was the right thing to do.
And most don't do too much.
But it's but it's not a requirement, but it's definitely something we want to protect and keep going. For me, to just sort of get the conversation started, I think the the public facing document, the 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 seven bullet items, is probably the easiest place to start.
Yeah.
And then if we're going to have a policy that backs that up, we can, you know, we can make sure that the policy is in line with that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
It's got, your marked up version wasn't marked up for me, so.
Yeah, because when you get it here, you can't see.
I'm going off of what Peggy said.
Oh, yeah. So if you want to make your con, well, we, well, why don't you give your comment and then.
Did you, you just had to turn on track changes, maybe? Is your track change is not on?
No, but if it's a P, it's hard to see it that way.
Again, this is PDF.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I'd like to underline something philosophically before we get started.
You want me to share it?
Can you share mine, my version?
I believe I can.
Okay. Yeah, but you know what, when I was, when I put it up on my phone earlier, I couldn't see all of your markups, but now I can.
Look at that.
On YouTube. I'd like to underline something before we get started. Our our town meeting form of government is dependent upon three hundred or more volunteers who are donating their time, which is very precious to them. And, you know, that includes all of us. The purpose of meetings is to conduct the people's business. There are eighteen thousand of us. And I think it's important for us to make sure we balance off the fact that there may be three people in a room who want to have an hours interchange with a board or commission. But that board or commission needs to get its work done on behalf of all of us. And so I think it is appropriate to put certain caps, restraints, or limitations on how much of a two hour meeting is devoted towards a handful of people that might be in the room. All citizens have an opportunity to comment in various kinds of ways. They don't have to be physically present. Those who are physically present certainly deserve a chance to be heard, but not at the expense of all of the other people who are expecting that board to get its work done on behalf of all of us. So I think it is valid to have restraints, and I I think that's a good starting place for looking at these points.
Yeah, and I think you can see my change. Jeanie, if you could just scroll up to the top, the first change was just to, instead of calling it reminders, let's call it guidelines, which then will tie to the other other document. And I think that's the essence of what we're doing here, is we're suggesting guidelines that the chair ultimately is going to, as Peggy said earlier, kind of read the room and figure out what's important and how much time do we have, and how many people are here, and kind of, you know, base it on that. So I I think there's a lot of flexibility to the chair, but I think more more importantly is the boards and commissions that may be not following this. And this is really to help them as well.
I feel like thi- this is all very similar to what the Board of Ed already does, and, you know,
Bruce, that's my stuff.
With my time on the Board of Ed, we had some packed meeting rooms, and we followed guidelines such as these. Everybody had a chance to speak and express their comments or concerns, ask their questions. They were notated. Everything was, you know, handled in a very orderly fashion, and it still gave us time to conduct our business. You know, you're not limited to what you could talk about or ask questions about. It's not limited to only items that are on that night's agenda because I think that's important for citizens to be able to communicate any number of things that they might have concerns about in our public forum, which is these meetings. So I know that was something that had been under consideration, but it's nowhere in these documents. So this is really just setting a level playing field for all of our boards, committees, and commissions.
It's a starting point. Yeah, and it's not, there is zero attempt here to limit public participation, zero.
And then I think the other thing, because I I think one of the comments earlier today, this is a very different than a a formal public hearing that my planning and zoning is having. That has its own legal guidelines. This is just for your typical board and commission meeting. Yeah. Not a regulatory board. That is governed by a different process, and and it, and and so it's just really trying to put some, you know, structure to what we kind of already do. But at least now, I will say, we had other other meetings where people were pushing back on just some of those simple things that we were saying, you know. So this is just codifying practice for us.
So I think I get two high level things that we might want to make sure we address. One, regular meeting comments and special meeting.
Oh, interesting, yeah.
So the state does distinguish a difference between the two. And for for me, a regular meeting, time constraints aside, a resident should be able to come in and give up a a comment on on really anything they feel needs to be considered by the board and not limited to any particular subject matter. A special meeting, we're getting together for a special purpose. If there's public comments in that meeting, it really should be focused on the, an agenda item in that meeting and not be a free ranging conversation.
Yeah, and that's a facilitation thing, too, again, back to the chair, the chair.
But it recognizes the difference between.
Yeah.
It recognizes there's a difference in the meeting.
Yeah, and it sets the expectation for the public, too, which is important.
Yeah, and and I think a special meetings, at times, we don't have public comment. Usually, it's a very time consuming or time sensitive, limited focus. So we haven't always had public comment.
Right.
Especially.
But they would, I I can imagine a special meeting where we do do that.
Right, like, yes, of course, and most of them we do, but sometimes it's just we're doing some quick action item that we don't need to.
The other thing, and I think the, what I see, the the biggest source of frustration over the years is people coming with a question expecting an answer.
Yes.
And we have a great opportunity here to 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 set an expectation that this is an opportunity for you to speak up on something that concerns you or interests you. Ask a question if you have a question, but don't expect an answer necessarily. And the best way to handle that is to do it in writing, do it both ways. You know, get get your camera, get your question on camera, but then also submit it in writing. And that way, you're sure that the question you asked on camera is the one that's being answered because things can get lost in.
And I love that we've, I love that we've added that in either eight, you know, the the actual email address, so that people have it. I think that's going to be great.
And so the, one of the things in this public facing document would be maybe just the request, please frame your comment as a statement. You know, if it's a question, just understand that we're going to be asking you for a a written copy of it, and and we're not going to necessarily endeavor to answer it on the spot.
I think that's a better policy.
Item number five, well, and so this policy, and this is what is supposed to be kind of a short version
which, my hope is that this is something that we print on the back of every agenda.
Yeah, that's that's the intention.
That's that's why it's shortened, yes.
This one, yes, good, yes.
And and if, so if you look at the policy, the policy is kind of like broad for all boards and commissions. And then the the final section is each board adopts guidelines for their own meeting. So this would be our adopted guidelines for our meeting.
So Bruce, number seven, in the policy says, at no time shall the chair or BCC members be required to respond to questions posed during citizen comment periods of meetings. So that's on the policy side, there's obviously something here as well.
And then here, we do it more, you know, a little simpler, just stating that this is not a time for public debate. We will try to note questions and answer it possible. Sometimes the questions, there's, there's no answer, you know, we don't, can't.
But again, back to facilitation number one, too, if it's a yes or no answer, you're obviously going to answer it, too. So you're not, you don't have to answer it, but you can if you want.
Yeah.
It gives you flexibility.
So, I mean, I'm I'm comfortable with the Scott's changes to the guidelines. Bruce, do you have any specific things that you would, so his or her?
I just tried to tie the two documents together so that the use of the word guidelines and then kind of making sure in the policy that it's pointing to, to Bruce's point, how we're going to use this document with, you know, attaching it to the agenda.
Right. So the regular versus special, I think, is something we want to capture in here.
They said comment may be offered, maybe offered.
Which one are you putting out? You put it on this one?
So, yeah, so I'm just, if I look at yours, number one, you could, we could add citizen public comment may be offered at the beginning or end of a regular or special meeting.
However, a special meeting is on a single topic or something like that.
So if we go back to the policy, it talks about, it talks about limiting it to the agenda items.
Right, and and.
And maybe that's where we we do the first breakout. Or we do a a one A and a one B, a regular meeting, comment could be. You know, the comment could be on on anything, on on, and then one B, a special meeting, the comment has to be in relationship to.
That's fine, I got with that. And that's, yeah.
So. Here we just talk about regular meeting, right, for guidelines for citizen comment at town meetings. Each of which should put citizen comment period in this agenda. For regular meeting, you can adopt a set of guidelines for the conduct of, if there's any public comment for the topic. Maybe we just say that it's. That, I hope that worked. We did get rid of that, yeah.
I just added it. So one A, one B. How's that? Nice and simple, and then everybody has it. Bruce, so I just did what you said. So under one, right here, I just did a one A, for regular meeting, comments can be about any topic. Two, one B, for a special meeting, comments must be focused on the agenda. Right.
That's fine. One that's, one that's like the beginning or the end, but I do think it's better if people can see. Yeah. Okay.
Either way, I like that.
And I'm good with your other changes.
I got a question, number three, just long puzzled me. If somebody stands up and their address is out of town, are they out of order?
We've had that recently a couple times too.
That's really our choice. And I think to me, it's more understanding who's in the room and what the context of the comment is. Like, if we have like 50 people and they're all out of town, we might say, look, we are only limiting this to residents only. I think that's a discretion we can do, but.
Usually people copy out it too and they'll, I just remember that one situation where that individual would say, but I'm moving back to Madison, or I used to live in Madison.
Or they could own a business here in Madison. It could be something impacting their business, or, or they run a school in Madison, you know?
What do you, what do you say? Please, please state your full name and address, and then a parentheses or connection to Madison, or something like that.
For me, but, but I.
I, I, can we tell someone?
We can go there. I mean, I, this is clean, so I'm.
Yeah.
I don't need it, but.
I mean, it's, it's, it's a really, it's a really good point. I, to my way of thinking, we represent the taxpayers of Madison. And so our, our input should be limited to the taxpayers of Madison. So that covers your, your business, your business owner.
They could be renting, though, a, you know.
Well, if they're doing their business properly, they're paying personal property tax on their belongings and. So. I, I would hate to see.
Let's not, let's just.
Somebody from another town get up and say, I don't like your policy on.
Beach pass.
Beach passes.
Yeah.
Or tree cutting, or road paving. I'm like, yeah, thanks, I'm, you know, we're not here to listen to that.
Yeah, but that to me comes back to facilitation.
Yeah.
None of the people move.
No.
I think.
We struggle with getting people in the room.
I mean, we do have people from outside organizations that make comments supporting a, you know, nation. Or, yeah, I think like we don't want to get too into weeds, but I think if we know we're in a situation, I think that's our board saying, let's just keep this, make sure this is just Madison.
So, so I think that's a great segue into the timing, the timeline.
Yeah.
And I wonder if we should make space in the beginning of the meeting to read the room and before public comment and say, okay, guys, there's a lot of people who want to be heard tonight. So we're going to put these rules of order in place for this meeting.
Sometimes we've asked folks to raise their hand if they would like to comment, if, if they intend to comment tonight. Because there's been many times when there's a lot of people here.
But nobody wants to say anything.
They don't stand up and say anything.
Right. They're just there to listen.
So it's hard to read the room without some indication of how many people want to speak. That to me is.
But again, let's not get too caught up in this, guys. At the end of the day, like we're saying, please limit comments to two minutes each. It's a guideline.
Yeah, it's a guideline.
Again, through facilitation, we can change it.
Try to keep it, have, have we ever cut anybody off? I think it's only been with somebody, it's their second or third comment and it's going.
Or they're on page five of a comment that is saying a lot of the same stuff.
And there's a lot of people in the room. I think you just have to allow for some flexibility there. But I think the goal would be to keep it around two minutes.
Because you want people to be succinct in their point.
Yeah.
And I think we would do well to telegraph that before the public started talking, to say, you know, it looks like maybe there are a lot of people, we're gonna, we'll do a first round of two minutes and then if there's other things to say and it turns out there's only three people that want to talk.
Totally.
We can give people another bite at the apple.
Yeah, the Board of Ed, like, has a written statement that they read.
They read it every time.
Yeah, they read it every time. They have, Emily's got her cards to let people know what time and that sort of thing, especially if it's a busy meeting.
You're in charge of the card.
Can I get flags?
So Bruce is the timer, you're the card reader.
So I, if, if, if there's a way to make like a sort of a natural pause in the agenda, where before we get there, even if it's in your notes.
What, I, I.
You do say it sometime. You do, you do say it.
I, I, yeah, I, I.
Lots of times when it's busy.
I will say, I will open up for public comment. We have a lot of people here tonight, you know, I was, I was asking people.
It's when there's a full room.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think there's ever really.
When you have three people in here, like, who cares?
Nobody cares, nobody cares, including us.
Yeah. So, you know, but some people go on.
We care about their comments, we don't care about.
Some people can go on for 10 minutes, though. I think still there's the ability to say, you know, thank you for your comment. And we understand your point, let's move on, you know? But that doesn't mean timekeeper stuff, you know what I'm saying?
Exactly.
So, um, I think we do the timekeeper stuff and we know that we just, there's a big issue, public issue and people are very, so.
Okay, so here's one we haven't talked about that's not in the agenda. How many people with the same point of view, the same thing to say? Do we listen to before we say, is there anybody who has a different perspective on this? Is it, is it, do we hear five comments and then say, we'd like to now hear? And if nobody raises their hand, we go right back. But I would hate to drown out one or two people because there are 10 people who feel one way. And so we, I think we want to, to be five, right? We hear five people all with the same perspective. We say, is there anybody in here who has a different perspective on this topic? They raise their hands, we'd like to hear from you now.
So I don't think that has to be in the policy. I think that's really how we conduct the meeting. And once again, you could say like, you know, let's maybe open it up to some other views, you know? Because sometimes I'm just sitting here going.
I do think it's important, though, to get a feel for how many people might be thinking similarly about something, you know? Because if we veer away from them, we may not understand the full impact of the number of people. But to Bruce's point, I wouldn't want somebody to feel like, well, I'm thinking differently and I'm afraid if I say something in this space, it's not going to be well received. And then we never hear that alternate point of view. So, you know, it, it is a fine line to walk. I want to know how many people actually feel a certain way, but I don't want somebody to feel intimidated to express an alternate viewpoint, if that makes sense.
And then I would propose that we would go back to that other viewpoint after we've heard. So that it's, it's a, it's a back and forth.
A balance.
It's not a.
So I, I guess my point is that even though I'm chair, if you feel that is, I'm not reading the room correctly, you can certainly say, you know.
Let's listen.
Yeah.
We want to listen.
Are you okay? Let's, let's hear.
A few more comments.
Yeah, I think that's us working together.
Yeah.
And just nudging me, because I'm sitting here just trying to get through it and, you know, be orderly about it. So I think that that is something where we can all play that role and like, you know, raise, raise a flag and say, hey, you know, why don't we hear, you know, do you mind, you know, those who are interested in, you know, sharing a different opinion about the topic? So I don't, I just would hate to.
Yeah.
Because that's getting really, I don't know if we want to like codify. I think that's more how we.
It's a technique.
Yeah, it's a technique. And, and I will say, I'm kind of the facilitator as the chair, but I'm facilitating on behalf of the board. So I'm totally open to that. But, you know, it's just hard sometimes to figure out, you know? So I think interjecting.
Yeah, and also too, I think we have to be respectful to people's time. You know, not just our time, but the public's time. The public have, have taken the time to come down here, you know, certainly online as well, taking out their dinner time, but come down here in person to say something that they feel passionate about, we should hear.
I, I 100% agree with that. I think to your point, though, it's also respectful to the other people to come and to make sure that their voice is heard as well. So.
It's a balance.
And sometimes.
Yeah.
Not everybody who comes wants to speak.
Right.
I think another technique is, after we've heard five, people say the same thing. It's perhaps for us to say, who else sitting in this room feels the same way?
Or are there any alternative viewpoints that we could hear from?
Well, that's right.
Yeah.
Although then it's hard to tell. People aren't speaking, just where they are.
And that's a good point out, just to Alex's point that he brought up at the beginning in public comment, is that sometimes, you know, maybe people aren't great speakers, maybe they're nervous speakers, maybe they have challenges with speaking for one reason or another. So to give them an opportunity to still express their viewpoint, but in.
It's like a safe space.
A manner that's, you know, easier for them. Yeah, I like the hand raise, you know, option for people.
It's another thing.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it belongs to the public.
Right, 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 okay.
Good.
All right, well, so I think then if we agree to the amendments that Scott made.
I say it, I'll just say it.
Do we want to then vote on it? Or do you want to like have one more pass of us or just vote on?
No, I think perfect, see, I mean, I did here.
Yeah.
I think this is getting something that's directionally correct at this point in time. Maybe the year we tweak it again.
Yeah, we can adopt this.
And I think when we roll it out, we roll it out with some of this narrative. Look, where we're trying to make this more predictable, we're trying to make it more productive, we're not trying to stifle anything. If it's not working, we're going to adjust.
Yeah, I'd like to see this get out to all 16 boards and commissions. And this, this is going to help, this is intended to help them.
Well, that was the one thing that we didn't, you know, I didn't get hate back from other chairs or. And that's where, because we have the second, we have the section that's really what their board wants to do, right? We're giving them guidelines and recommendations and they can adopt, they can adopt what we have or they could say, we don't want.
This is like their starting point, right?
Yeah, we only want it at the end. Or we want to have, you know, a little bit like the Board of Ed does, where we have like topic, agenda topic at the beginning, anything at the end. So, okay, well, I guess with that then, I'd like to make a motion to include the citizens' parliament guidelines as amended by Scott Murphy.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Okay.
Maybe, should we amend it? Should we do the policy and the guidelines?
Yeah, policy, sorry, we only want, that's right. Okay, I'm amending that to include the policy and the guidelines. All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Great.
Great.
Okay, great, thank you. And then. Okay, do we have any hands raised?
Yes, you do. Go ahead, Terri.
Hello again, Terri Van Endolder, Bartlett Drive. Looking at the guidelines that you just had posted, item eight on that guideline mentions the policy that written comment can be requested to be added to the meeting minutes up to 24 hours after a board of selectmen meeting or a commission meeting. Does this practice of adding public comments to meeting minutes apply only to written comments submitted? Or will oral comments be added to the meeting minutes as well, regardless of whether the commenter formally requests such? Again, this has been pointed out that this was, had been done during the years of previous board of selectmen administrations.